Gentlemen in the back. You would please, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, Lord, if you would please.
Let us pray. Let us pray. We believe in the Father, we believe in our Jesus, we believe in the Holy Spirit, we believe in the family, in all mighty and wise, in all loyal and powerful and sinning, in all human and understanding God, for there is a God who through the hand that serves, the man who is born, who comes before me, God, not for his shape-form and passion-born, but for our size, shape, and form, to make wise decisions for the innocent people that elected us. Father, we thank you so much for everything that you did give us, and, Father God, we pray that you would bless us and our good people and our leadership in our regard. And, Lord, we just thank you so much for all the pardons that you've made, going on with you, to guide us in the right direction, Father God, that we can see success. We thank you for you being the great God that you are. We ask you that you please deliver to all our sins, which is known and unknown, and say that sin brought out of our flesh, Christian. Father, our hearts hurt for those whom you crain, we pray so much for them, and those that lie, we pray for them. But you said we will see all these families and all these things be natural disasters, but end yet to come. God bless us and prepare us to be ready when that day be come, when we come down to the end of our old life, Lord, that you receive us in your kingdom. We thank you for loving us, thank you for loving us, thank you for loving us. Teach us how to love one another, the way you love us, in spite of all our differences and misunderstandings, God, we thank you. We pray for all our departments, and this, Father God, and the name of you, we thank you for them. We give all our praise and glory to you again, God, because of who you are, Lord. We thank you so much for being our God and we your servants, and our Father and your creatures. Thank you for patrolling our destiny, not only our city, but our nation, because you made us and doing everything about us, Father, and you choose us, and you pray.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate you being here with us this evening. Our first official order of business is to approve the official agenda with the consented items, and I will go through. There's one item on the agenda that we can dispense with, the special events, it was added under Mayor's Business, Item C. They have provided us their insurance, so we do have that, so without any objection, I'd like to remove that from the agenda. Any objection to that? All right, seeing none, we will remove that from the agenda. Ms. Harden? All right, other than that, do I have any changes to the agenda, Alderman Carter?
Oh, was there under Department Business, Item B, is the reason that wasn't placed on the consent agenda? Page three.
Under the, oh, I'm sorry, under Community Development and Planning? It was one of those things that required, I think, a little bit of just explanation, but if you want to place it on the consent agenda, feel free to do so.
That's the same one we put about Friday, right?
Yes, it is. It's the, it was originally intended from the staff to be a boulevard, and, with a median, and the applicant is asking that we have a revision to that, to reflect a bike lane and some walking area, and change it so that there is no boulevard.
You recommend we have discussion on that?
Uh, I, I'm perfectly comfortable with it. I think the staff just wanted to make sure that we knew what was going on, so it's up to, it's up to this board. If you'd like to make a motion that we, or if you'd like to see about putting that on the consent agenda, we'll see if there's an objection.
I will, none of my colleagues have an objection.
Okay, any objection to putting item, Department, under Department Business, Item B1 on the consent agenda? Any objection?
And that's the approval of the appeal, is that correct?
Yes. Any objection? Seeing none, okay, we'll put that on the consent agenda. Any other items, Alderman Carter?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Um, any items, Alderman Rupp?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Brooks?
Oh, no, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Bailey?
No, ma'am, thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman Siskel?
Vice Mayor Perp?
No, ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Ball?
No, ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
All right, seeing none, I need a motion to approve the official agenda with the consented items as modified.
So moved.
I have a motion from Alderman Rupp, do I have a second?
Right.
Second from Alderman Brooks. All those in favor, please sign if I was saying aye. Poked, motion carries, and I will read the consent agenda items. First is consideration of the minutes of the September 6th, 2022 meeting of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville. Second is consideration of the minutes of the September 16th, 2022 work session of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville. Under Mayor's Business, we have consideration of declaring the building serving as the former Humane Society shelter as abandoned, dilapidated, and no longer used or needed for public purposes, and authorizing its demolition by the city through the use of in-kind services and disposals of demolished materials pursuant to Mississippi Code annotated, Section 17-25-25/5, such that, given that such material will have no salvage value. Item B is consideration to appoint Nancy Hargrove, the sole applicant, to fill a vacancy with the Library Board and Trustees for a term appointment of October 1, 2022 to September 30, 2027. Under Community Development, we've put on consent, number one, consideration of Administrative Appeal 22-01, a request for an administrative appeal, staff's decision to require a boulevard-type road for the future access road for the right-of-way development on the west side of Walmart Neighborhood Market. Under Engineering D, uh, D1, one is consideration of authorizing to advertise for construction bids for the build grant on Corridor Project pending MDOT authority to advertise notification and authorization for the mayor to sign any MDOT required paperwork. Under Finance Administration, Item 2 is request approval of the 2022 Municipal Compliance Questionnaire. Under Fire Department, we have request permission to allow the Starkville Fire Department to develop a student firefighter program. Under Human Resources, we have request authorization to hire Zalen Brown, Jean King, and Daniel Triplet as entry-level firefighters in the Starkville Fire Department. Item 2 is request approval of the promotion of Chase Bear to the rank of Sergeant in the Starkville Fire Department. Request authorization to hire Kenneth Baxter as police officer in the Starkville Police Department. Request authorization to hire Aaron Brownlee as a wastewater operator in the Starkville Utilities Department. Five is request authorization to hire Don Blackwell as an aircraft lineman, FBO, in the Starkville Airport Department. And six is request authorization to hire Hunter Hughes as part-time civil engineer intern in the Engineering Department. Then under Sanitation, we have request approval for consideration of purchase one 25-yard rear loader garbage truck from Sansom Equipment Company, Inc., the lowest quote of $247,024, and authorize the city clerk to advertise for financing within 30 days of delivery. Two is consideration of a radiator replacement and engine repair to the 2020 Peterbilt, by 20 Mack garbage truck from Dobbs Peterbilt in the amount of $8,253.82. And then under Utilities, we have request authorization to accept the lowest quote from Control Systems, Inc., for a 16-inch wastewater magnetic pulometer for the trim cane pump station in the amount of $7,870. And then number two is request approval to advertise for request proposals for software solutions for customer information systems for Starkville Utilities. And that concludes the consent agenda items.
Thank you, ma'am.
My pleasure, happy to do that. All right, uh, next item for Business is, uh, announcements and comments, and I get to do the fun part, which is to, um, make new employee introductions. So we have a number of folks, I believe, who are here this evening, and I will read out a little bit about them, and we can welcome them into the city. That way, we get to put a face to it, and you get to put, get to put a face to us. So we appreciate that everyone's willing to be here to do that. So we have first from the Police Department, we have Police Officer, I'm told, Vandy, goes by Vandy L. Smith. So Officer Smith was born in Starkville and raised in East Cora. He graduated from East Cora High School in 2013, and after graduation, he accepted a scholarship to play football at Faulkner University. While in college, he joined the Mississippi Army National Guard, graduated from Faulkner University in 2017 with a degree in criminal justice. In 2018, Vandy did his first tour overseas with a mission called Operation Sparta and Shield. Thank you for your service. In 2019, he returned home and went to the North Mississippi Training Center. He would later be employed by the Chippa Local Police Department, and he made the very wise decision to come into Starkville. His hobbies are trail riding, training jiu-jitsu, playing football, and spending time with family and friends. Welcome and love the Boats. Next, under Sanitation and Environmental Services, Memorial Bonner, sanitation worker one. There we go. Mr. Bonner is from Starkville, Mississippi. He previously worked for Rimpehl Rotocast Corporation in West Point, Mississippi. He enjoys playing basketball and spending time with his two dogs, Doja, is it Doja? And Dior, in his spare time. Yeah, and what kind of dogs are they? Pit bulls, all right, well, we'll look forward to seeing those. Thank you so much, welcome. And then we have Ralph Weeks. Mr. Weeks is originally from Calhoun, Mississippi. He has lived in Starkville now for seven years. He previously worked for Franklin Corporation in Houston. He's married with three children, and in his spare time, Ralph enjoys spending time with his family, hunting and fishing. So your time of year is coming up, isn't it? The hunting time of year? All right, well, welcome, Mr. Weeks, thank you. All right, Starkville Utilities, we have Miles Chambly, who's a lineman. Miles is from Columbus, Mississippi. He's a 2019 graduate of Utility Line Worker Program through the East Mississippi Community College. He previously worked for B&amp;B Electric for two years as an apprentice lineman. He's married to Elise Chambly, and they have three children. Miles will always spend time with his family, grilling food, and being outdoors, so welcome, Miles. Is that like a sailor thing you got on your shoulder there, on your, on your, on your sleeve?
Uh, I think it's just our posture.
Okay, cool. I had me going back to the military there for a second. I was about to get really excited. Okay, next we have Amelia Montgomery, is that correct? Amelie, Amelia, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Amelia Montgomery. Amelia is originally from Mississippi, born in Ackerman, but moved to Milwaukee, Wisconsin when she was a young girl. Having outgrown Wisconsin, which is youth, she decided to move back to Mississippi to start a new beginning. Her favorite hobbies are playing video games, exercising, and outdoor activities such as hiking and frisbee golf. Have you been to J.L. King?
No.
We've got frisbee golf at J.L. King. She is most passionate about animals. She hopes to one day have a small animal farm around four dogs and a few horses. Welcome, Amelia.
Thank you.
And Tyler Peters. All right, GIS Coordinator, and we're very excited to have our GIS Coordinator, put these back. Tyler is from Aberdeen, Mississippi, and is a certified remote sensing specialist and GIS professional. He has previously worked for Mississippi Mineral Resources Institute at the University of Mississippi. Tyler holds an Apple Developer License and enjoys coding augmented reality AR applications for LiDAR-based camera applications. You see anyone walking around downtown Starkville with several cameras attached to them, it's just Tyler, so we will look forward to that. Thank you, Tyler, welcome. All right, Municipal Court, we have Bridget Young, Deputy Court Clerk. Bridget's from Artesia, Mississippi. She's a graduate of West Lowndes High School and has served time in the U.S. Army National Guard. Thank you for your service. Prior to coming to the City of Starkville, she was employed in a dispatcher with Lowndes County 911. She has a one-year-old daughter, Aubrey. Bridget enjoys watching football, softball, and spending time with family and friends. Welcome, glad to have you. And then Shanika Eppener?
Eppinger.
Eppinger. All right, words now, spelled it wrong, I know it is, there's no G here, I'm sorry. Deputy Court Clerk, Shanika is originally from Sarah, Mississippi, by way of the long, of the long, long town community. She's a 2017 graduate of Mississippi State University with a degree in English and a minor in African America. She's the youngest of three daughters and values family over everything. She's a proud member of Alpha Kappa, Alpha Sorority, where she served with her sororities, sisters, and her community. Previously, she was employed with the City of Prenchell, Mississippi, as a municipal court clerk, and has also worked in the North Pinola School District as a teaching assistant and lead English-language arts teacher. She's glad to be back in Starkville, and Starkville has always been and always will be home, and we are delighted to have you back, so welcome. All right, thank you, everyone, we appreciate you being here with us this evening. And with that, I'm going to say a couple things. Uh, we've got a huge week this week coming up. Um, in case anyone doesn't know, we've got Tailgate of Town on Friday, which we're going to have out here in the plaza, the, all the departments are going to get together, we're going to enjoy some camaraderie, which is downtown and actually all over town. They've revived this from a few years ago, pre-pandemic. Um, so we're going to be doing that, they're going to be grilling, and so there'll be opportunities for, I think, hot dogs, wings, and burgers, as I recall, and other assorted activities, so that's one item. We've also got the SEC Nation is in town this weekend, so big deal on Saturday, but also we've got, I think, Mr. Feinbaum has his show on Saturday, or Friday afternoon, so lots of things going on, homecomings, um, we've got a tailgate that we're going to be at, at the SHS Homecoming is coming Friday, so it's not this coming Friday, why are you looking at me funny? Is it gone?
No. I don't have the homecoming this Friday.
Is it, okay, Tailgate, I'm sorry, it's homecoming out here, but Tailgate for us. Okay. Messing with me there, Alderman Rupp, trying to confuse me, and it's real easy to do. Anyway, we've got a big, big weekend, and we're going to be ready, all our guys know about the, how we want to look, put our best foot forward for everyone, we're going to be high-profile this weekend, so we're really excited about it. So that's my, that's my saying for, for this evening, so anyone else? Alderman Carter, anything?
I can ask Chief Young, but really encouraged to see this, come on up, just, I've, I've filled a couple questions about this student firefighter program, if you tell us what it is, the highlight, the age bracket, and what's going on with that, what y'all are looking?
Good afternoon, Board Mayor, Vice Mayor. Board, I, you need to start?
Yeah, just tell us a little bit about it, if the kid can apply at what age and how to do it?
Well, very excited about this program, I wish I could say I would be architect and, not, actually, I'm back in Auburn, I was at a conference about four or five months ago in Mobile, and this program came up, uh, it's for-
College students?
Full-time college students, or basically full-time college students, we hire young, give you a full-time firefighter and run the college student, so we're allowing time to get off, go to class, or come in to class, and finish their shift now. Uh, at some point, you look at the vision really much, for state, state, city policy, so age is pretty much college student, 18 and above.
Come down to Station 1, talk to you, or?
Right, so right now, we do, we had two people, hopefully, that can do so far, I can probably, uh, approve tonight, so we probably bring them though, and make sure we, so we're looking at doing probably three, start off with Saturday, and works out, and then we'll get over, yeah, people always love classes, so hopefully it works out. I, I think it's going to be a great program, we're already connected to Mississippi State, so this is really a great connection to begin this program.
Thank you, sir. Chief, tell them about the success that Steve Alderman Alabama's had with this, in the partnership with Alderman University and the same program.
Alderman's been doing it for things since 1991. Currently, they have, according to their training sheet, they have 110 firefighters, 89 of those firefighters, including chief and training team, so it's there at the second, usually what they find out once you go to the program, the chief, the manager, firefighters, so I think it's really, uh, for us, for our, for-
Chief, appreciate you being innovative with that.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Alderman Carter, anything else?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you, Alderman Rupp?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Brooks?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you, Alderman Bailey?
Alderman Bailey, thank you.
All right, Alderman, just on now. Vice Mayor?
No, ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Ball?
No, ma'am, thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you all so much. Next item is Citizen Comments, anyone having anything that we should say? You have three minutes to share with the board, any comments, concerns? And Ms. Harden will be our time keeper, so, Mr. Turner?
Our, our opinions, and men and women, my name is Albert Hunter Ward Seven, our, our mayor, support you chief, the fire chief. All right, we want to thank our department here, um, with the last games that we have had, we have been safe, and we thank the police department, the fire department, sanitation for keeping us safe, uh, and the father to, to get with me in the same thing, uh, keeping us safe, uh, beginning to the day of time of the year, October until, uh, February, all right, um, if the, the police and fire department, sanitation department can give the public tips on how to be safe, uh, uh, whether it be with fire, breaking, or whatever, that we appreciate, uh, what we don't know is, y'all, they give us the tips and help. Uh, we have a big hole, uh, at the Dollar General on Jackson Street, and, and still getting smaller, it's getting bigger. Our, uh, the, the landscape from Ohio River couldn't get ready to turn at 6:50, the landscape is blind, and if you come from Big Walmart, you can't see one of, and a, just, and a person, so.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. And just as a comment, I believe that they were making repairs at that, that hole, um, at the Dollar General on Jackson, I saw them out there today doing something, so.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? Citizens comments? Anyone else? Anyone? Seeing none, we'll close it for citizens' comments, and first thing we have is a public hearing, in consideration of a variance 22-12. I believe you're handling that this evening, are you not, Mr. Turner? Okay, Mr. Havering is out, so Cody is stepping in for him.
Yes, ma'am. This is variance 22-12 for University Crossing. This is a request by John Granberry. Excuse me, guys, I'm looking at this here. You guys see right up there? More or less? Okay. Uh, it's a request by John Granberry on behalf of Highway 12 East LLC for variance from the stormwater and parking setback requirements at the University Crossing Shopping Center. This is located, um, at the corner of Spring Street and Highway 12 in southwest side of the intersection. The applicant is proposing to extend an existing building at the northeast corner of the site, and this is the old Cadence Building, formerly Cadence Building, and since the development exists on a condo lot, a single lot, any modification to the building as a part of the condo could require the entire site to be brought up to conformity with Unified Development Code. Uh, as a part of that, the parking lot will need to be remodified, um, and stormwater requirements to be triggered. The parking lot is being proposed to be reworked, to change the flow of traffic, add required landscape islands, additional sidewalk, and landscaping. Uh, due to the existing dimensional constraints, um, some of the areas of the parking lot are not able to meet the five-foot parking setback requirement, and due to the site being pre-existing, there's a, a claim of hardship with the stormwater retention. Uh, so the applicant is requesting relief from stormwater requirements and minimum parking setbacks. The request was noticed in accordance with Section 3.7.3.1 of the Unified Development Code. Thirty-nine property owners of record within 160 feet of the subject property were notified by direct mail of the request. A legal ad was published in the Starkville Daily News in September 11, 2022, and a sign was posted on the property in a conspicuous location. Uh, as of this date, the planning office has received one phone call requesting information about the request, and we did have some citizens show up at the Board of Adjustments and Appeals to express some concern. Um, Section 3.7.1 of the UDC has six criteria for the variance review and approval, which are listed here, and then for the stormwater, there's an additional requirement that comes out of 3.7.6, which is listed here. In the opinion of the planning department, the proposed variance request could meet the criteria for a variance review and approval, and at the September 28 Board of Adjustment and Appeals meeting, they voted unanimously to approve.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of Mr. Burnett before we move into, well, I'll see if the applicant, Alderman Brooks?
Could you back up for that site plan idea?
Sure.
So, there's going to be, there's going to be some changes then on the exit on the Spring Street, my friend, and you guys have no problem then with the parking setback?
The planning department seems to not have a problem with it, that's more Daniel's, uh, wheelhouse, but he seems to be fairly agreeable.
Okay. The, the landscape hours were really bad, decrease in that one.
Yes, sir, increases of, of, of urgency.
There are, there are increases inside the building, but the lips still will be.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Anyone else before we ask for the applicant? Is the applicant here? Yes, sir, anything you wish to add? I just always want to give you an opportunity.
Yes, thank you for that, Mayor, John Granberry, Grandberry Associates, for the record. Um, like Cody said, we covered pretty much everything. We're changing the flow of traffic, um, as we, uh, work through our site plan in the, in the northeast corner of the Cadence Bank, uh, we triggered, um, the need for a variance request because of the stormwater ordinance requirements, so, um, in the, in the existing, as you know, right now, the existing parking lot is all paved, there's no landscape islands, there's no sidewalks, no pedestrian connectivity, um, and as you can see, we're changing all of that, uh, and then also going to come in and rework the existing parking lot, so, you know, for repair, uh, certain vision, uh, drive again. Uh, so there is one that, as they, they mentioned, they're, they're the concerned citizens, um, on the adjacent subdivision, some of the stormwater and the, all the stormwater from the parking lot, uh, drains to the southwest, and it leads in the very southwest corner, um, through, through a series of pipes there that are improperly constructed and installed. Went out there today, and we've been talking with the adjacent landowners, uh, and, and also with the city engineer to remedy the problem. Um, we're going to remove some of those pipes and regrade that area so that the water's not backing up and causing a problem with the adjacent landowners. So, uh, that's it, we appreciate it, and we hope soon to have a building partner.
Okay, well, it is, it is in terrible disrepair, uh, so it'll be, be a big rework, but, and this is actually kind of off the subject, but kind of not, we are looking at doing something at that intersection right there, and y'all are aware of that, so that whatever you're doing now is not going to create a problem for the future for that, that, uh, new intersection?
I'm setting up a meeting with, uh, your board, uh, John, we're all going to hash it out.
Okay, all right, just want to make sure that we don't plan on top of what it is.
That's right.
All right, any, any questions of the applicant? Alderman Bailey?
You don't overlay your parking lot?
Yes, yes.
What are these, these landscape islands?
Saw cut in the middle, the existing half saw, installed ahead of curve, you know, a poster, and, and they install landscape.
Anyone else? Any question? All right, thank you so much. I'll open it as a public hearing here, if y'all will give me a second?
Can you get the lights?
Oh, sure, yeah, I'm sorry, here, can you do that? Anyone wishing to speak to this matter now is your opportunity. He would, he would. For a guest. If you would, identify yourself, please.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, Lynn Spruill and Alderman. My name is Michelle Chastain, and I'm here on behalf of the residents, um, of Southdale and the landowners that, of Southdale as well. And although the Board of Adjustments and Appeals voted to recommend approval of the request, I'd like to point out and make sure that it is on record that there is a current problem with the stormwater drainage and the retention of water. The area backing up to the parking lot is turning into marshland, and it has gotten worse over the years. We have gotten together with the developer and the city engineer to work together in making a joint effort to clear out the area. We've identified the challenges, but work needs to be done on their part in order to remedy the situation, and they have it, as they've mentioned, acknowledged it. We would also like to thank the city engineer and the developers in taking their time and effort to address and eliminate the current drainage problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate you coming forward. Thank you.
Y'all in agreement that what the developer's going to do is to be sufficient to, to solve the water, the stormwater issue, potential stormwater issue?
They've really taken a lot of time to help us.
Yeah, we think so.
Y'all, y'all in agreement with what it's probably?
Yes, we believe so, yes.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to, anyone else wishing to speak to this as a public hearing? Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing, and unless there's further discussion from the board, we need a motion.
We do.
I have a motion from, I'm, there was a stereo, Alderman Brooks, motion from Alderman Brooks, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Rupp, Alderman Carter, okay, thank you. Uh, all those in favor, uh, please take me apart by saying aye. Poked, motion carries, thank you so much, it is announced, we'll look forward to those improvements. All right. All right, uh, next item on the agenda is, please, got it, please. I have a motion from Alderman Carter for approval. I have a second.
Second.
Second from Alderman Siskel. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
May.
May.
All right, motion carries five to two, and guys, that takes us down to, uh, executive session, so that is complete our, our open session. I need a motion to go into a closed determination session.
So moved.
A motion from Alderman Rupp, do I have a second? Second from Alderman Siskel. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.